The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting on Wednesday, March 28th, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, would you call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
And Chair Kane. Here. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Hansen in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, these sessions ought to be informative, and I want to share some important information with you. As you probably know, Michigan is in the final four. And we play tomorrow at 3 o'clock, so.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Also equally important, go Jayhawks.
It's a really funny name, you know. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in deliberations of the Planning Commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and helpful. At the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. One, during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communication period or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a member of staff, and please print your name clearly, so that I don't screw it up. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. And I believe we have a couple of reports tonight. I know we have historic preservation. Vice Chair Hudes?
Thank you. We had a meeting earlier today of the Historic Preservation Committee. We considered six items. 202 University Avenue was continued to sometime in April. 223 Masol Avenue was discussed and continued to a date uncertain. But I believe we're aiming at a quick resolution of that item, potentially even next week. 15 Loma Alta, we determined that there was no historic significance or architectural merit of the property, but we did suggest to rebuild in the existing style. That's not binding, but we made that suggestion. And 25 West Main, which is Gina's retail shop and other space, we provided input on the direction to Mr. Leonardis. And 16998 Kennedy Road, we provided direction regarding a second-story addition.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell was on that committee as well, right?
Yes.
You guys started at 4:00 and ended at 6:30:00, earning your pay. Good job. Are there other committee reports? Somebody else meant, no? All right. So we now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item not on the agenda. Do I have any cards for other than items on the agenda? We do not have any speakers tonight, so we move to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted on by a single motion of the commission. But before the Planning Commission acts on consent, any member of the public or the commission may request that that item be removed. And tonight, we have one item on consent, approval of the minutes of the March 14th Planning Commission. Any discussion to remove? Seeing none, could I have a motion? Commissioner Badami?
I move to approve the consent item consisting of the approval of the minutes from March 14th, 2018.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. 6-0. We move to the public hearings portion of our agenda and consider item number two, which is conditional use permit. Application U-18004, project location is 21 College Avenue, property owner is Sherry Flick. The applicant is Nicholas DeFou. We have a staff report tonight from Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, Chair Kane. The for you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with alcohol service at 21 College Avenue in the C2 Zone. Pursuant to the town code, a restaurant used in conjunction with alcoholic beverage sales for consumption on premises is allowed with a conditional use permit in the C2 Zone. The applicant is proposing the service of alcohol with the purchase of a qualified meal pursuant to the town's alcoholic beverage policy. The applicant has provided a project description and additional operational information, which has been included with your staff reports. The town's alcoholic beverage policy requires any new service of alcohol to be reviewed by the Planning Commission with final review authority resting with the Town Council. Pursuant to the discussion in the staff report, the proposed application meets the purpose, general policies, and specific policies of the town's alcoholic beverage policy. An addendum and desk item have been provided, which includes public correspondence, which was received after the publication of the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council based on the evidence and discussion provided in the staff report and subject to the conditions attached to the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. May I see a show of hands for the commissioners who have visited the property? Are there any disclosures for this item? Commissioner O'Donnell, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just have a question, staff. Is the restaurant next door, Nick's Restaurant, also open on Friday and Saturday till 12:30 a.m.?
I will defer to the applicant to answer that question. I don't know that answer.
Okay. You're recommending approval. You don't know whether it's kind of an initial late time for a restaurant and a bar? I just thought maybe somebody took a look at that. No?
I appreciate that. It's something I looked into very early on. I don't want to misspeak to it. We did encourage the applicant, and as we do with most conditional use permits, to look and consider a wider range than of hours they intend to operate so that, to avoid having to come back for an amendment to a conditional use permit later on, which would save the applicant time and cost.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen?
I just had one question. One issue that was discussed in the staff report was about the noise level, because I guess part of the building is open and some of the noise can happen. But the conclusion that was in the staff report was that there is sufficient distance to let the noise attenuate. So did I get that right, or do you have any more details? I mean, how much distance is there? I mean, I looked at the drawings, but it wasn't, you know, and saw the site, but it wasn't clear to me, you know, how you came to that conclusion.
The conclusion is that there's been previous uses there, and I did measure, rough measurements to the residences uphill and across college. And the attenuation wasn't measured or calculated, if that's the question you're asking, but it was thinking that there was sufficient space for it and that any noise issues would be handled on an enforcement basis.
Okay, good. And my follow-up question was then they're subject to the noise ordinance anyways, regardless of the conditions of the CUP?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this CUP would be new insofar as alcohol being served in the restaurant?
Correct.
When I visited the site today, there were a number of alcoholic bottles up on a counter. Do they have a CUP for alcohol or an exemption under some private club consideration?
I believe the private club allows the patrons to bring in their own alcohol, so it's not for sale. It's provided by themselves to themselves and their guests.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for 10 minutes. And we will be hearing from Mr. Nick DeFou?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. How are you, Commissioner? I will give you a brief history about me before I tell you about what we're going to do. So I grew up here in Saratoga, San Antonio, Saratoga. I moved here in 1992, and I started working as a dishwasher over in, at The Great Bear. And went back to college, came back, and went to culinary school. At culinary school, I went to Yegati, worked at Yegati, worked at Los Gatos Brewery Company while I was going to school and to get my experience. And doing that, I got another job over in San Jose, 71 St. Peter. Moved away to Carmel, worked at Roy's Restaurant. Spent a lot of time with Roy, spent a lot of time working at that restaurant. Got my bones, really got some great experience for about two years, but always knew that I was going to come back here. Excuse me. Got a job at Cathy Marcela, as a sous chef. And, it's all right, got a job at Cathy Marcela, the sous chef, became a chef, and then, you know, spent five years there learning from some, a great owner, a great person in the lawn, Martine Stabler. And, thank you. I'm not kidding, public speaking. My wife's probably laughing at me right now. Or embarrassed, one of the two. But anyway, so, yeah, so I worked at Cathy Marcela for a long time, then worked at 180, worked at Wine Cellar, worked at a lot of restaurants in town, stayed in town after, once I started Cathy Marcela. Took a brief, brief three-month hiatus because of the craziness that was going on at 180. Took a brief hiatus, worked at Los Altos Country Club with a former general manager of Los Gatos Brewery, Randy Perteau. He needed somebody to help him out. I worked at Los Altos Country Club. Got a phone call, said, hey, we got a spot open on Main Street. You know, do you want to open a little restaurant? I went by it. It was 900 square feet. I said, I gotta do it. You know, let's just do it. And having zero experience about signing a lease, having zero experience about owning a restaurant, but knowing how to treat people and knowing how to cook, I did it. And it was success from day one. We've been doing this for five years. We did it for five years over there. Got a call from Mr. Flick, Dave Flick, and said, hey, you know, we really want somebody over here. Time has run out on tapestry. You know, they had their run. It was a great run. But the time has come for us to get some fresh blood in here. No problem, Dave. I'll do whatever I can. And I did counsel, did counsel some other people, Mr. Del Gran, Jim Getz, some people who live in town, Ken Robinson. They counseled me about doing this move, what it would mean for me to do this, how much more work I would have to do, and if it was a good idea or not. And they all agreed that, you know, Nick, you gotta do it. It's a great location. It's a great spot. It's way bigger. We can do, we can do much more. And so I did it. And tragedy a little bit happened with Mr. Flick, but Sherry and the family stuck behind me, and they let me, they let me in. They did tons of work for that property before I moved in. They were, she's been a great landlord. She's been somebody who's cared about not only the business, but the property itself. And so now this opportunity comes up, whereas in the cigar lounge, who, you know, have had no problems with them personally, but it's time for them, with the smoke ordinances, with the cigar, it's time for them to maybe move on because of, the lease might be up, or the lease is up. And I've got a call that, you know, hey, you know what? Do you want this spot? And I said, yes, I do want this spot. I think we can make this happen. It's adjacent to my restaurant. I don't have to go outside and open and run the restaurant somewhere else or do something else like that. I can stay right here and just control both spots. So this new restaurant that I plan on doing, it's going to be a raw bar. It's going to be a raw, you know, full liquor, raw product. There won't be a hood. There won't be a grease trap needed. No constructional, just a little bit of constructional inside, you know, with code as far as doing bathrooms, water, you know, piping, and that's it, but that's pretty much it. We'll set up a walk-in refrigerator, freezer, and we'll do raw items, sushi, tartars, pokys, oysters, you know, all the raw product that we can do safely, we will do, we will do there. And we'll supply it to our customers, just like I do at Nick's On Main, or Nick's Next Door, excuse me. And, you know, we are number one on TripAdvisor. We are number one on Yelp. People come. It's a little emotional because I never thought this would ever happen. And, excuse me, never thought I would get to this point where people would actually come and eat at my restaurant. But anyways, they do, and it means a lot to me. And, you know, so that's the kind of the idea that we're going for. And I apologize for getting emotional, but it is kind of an emotional thing because cooking and serving the public is emotional for me. It's not an ego thing. It's not about having another restaurant and saying, hey, look at me. It's about serving the public, serving the town, the town that I almost, pretty much grew up in and want to be in, even though I don't live here personally, but I'm still part of this town. And I don't live here for a reason, but I'm part of this town because of where my home is in my restaurant. And so I asked the committee or the commission to afford me to the Town Council on an approval to do this, and I'd be open up to any questions. And, yeah, that's pretty much my story. Again, I'm sorry.
With a presentation like that, your wife shouldn't be embarrassed. She should stand up and cheer. Questions for the applicant. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Nick, I respect your work.
Yes.
I admired you for a long time.
Yes, I know.
I only have one question, and that was a question I asked previously. You've asked for closure on Saturday, Friday and Saturday, I think it was, at 12:30, I think it was. And so you'd be serving alcohol.
I'll do, I'll do whatever the...
Well, I just wanted to ask you, why do you want to be that late? Is your restaurant next door that late?
Like we discussed, it was, you know, you asked for a little bit more, see what happens, and then we will back. I don't want to stay there till 12:30 at night. I mean, I personally don't. I don't think, you know, I don't think any of my staff wants to stay there till 12:30 at night. It was just one of those things where, let's just ask for that and see, and then we can back it down. We'll back it down to the night, you know, the 11 o'clock hour when the restaurants, you know, pretty much close.
Just out of curiosity, though, is your very successful next-door restaurant, what time do you close on the weekend?
Our kitchen closes at 10. They're last customers. We asked to start quieting it down about 11 o'clock. That's where the town code is, that, you know, we have to stop serving, I believe, at 11 o'clock, but we stopped serving at 10, because we shut down the kitchen at 9:45. So we're probably just going to ask for, you know, let's keep the other place open, the kitchen open until maybe 10, and then we go up until 11 and be done. And just do it that way, and slowly get everybody out of there by 11, 11:30.
Okay, thanks.
That'd be the idea, the best scenario for me. That's, you know, because we are only going to be open for dinner. We're not going to be open for lunch, even though we've asked for it. And, you know, we like to keep that in there, the asking for lunch, but, you know, in case we have to do parties or something like that. But out of respect to Purple Onion and the other restaurants over there, I don't want to be open for lunch. I don't think it's right for me to personally be open for lunch because I don't want to monopolize everybody's lunchtime in my area, in my spot. So that's why I am not, and I've let them know that already. I've guaranteed that I'm not going to be open for lunch unless it's a private event.
Okay, thanks very much. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you for your presentation and for helping to develop economic vitality in a part of town that could use some more vitality on Main Street. And I think it's really important for businesses to be able to succeed, particularly in that area. I had really more an informational question for me, and that is, it seems as though some of the successful restaurants in town have another location or another type of restaurant that may be complementary to their first location. It's my impression that that's the case. Is that the case? And how does that affect your business model in terms of the way you would operate with more than one location?
You know, I don't, personally don't know about any other restaurants in town, what they're doing. I just know what I do. I don't, it's not that I don't care about them. I just concentrate on my business and what I'm doing. I try to stay out of that realm of what they're doing. But as far as how I'm doing it, I'm just providing a different culinary experience at that location than their experience of mine. At my restaurant, as many of you might know, you get a lot of food. I mean, it's, I'm the only owner. There's no investors. I don't have anybody looking over my shoulder. I'm allowed to do that. And at this other location, it won't be the grant, the big meals that you're getting. It'll still be meals. It'll still be, just like, you know, where they're doing it. I mean, what I've heard, actually, you know, they're doing it at flights. They're doing it at Manresa, small portions. There, but it's not going to be like that. It's going to be portions that are going to be good enough to have a meal with. And that's the trend that everybody's doing. I'm not following the, we need a trend. I'm just doing something that I think is a great idea. I think it's a great business idea because it's not going to, the cost of putting a restaurant in without a hood, without a grease trap, not having the expenses of doing that and extra noise from a hood. You know, and I think this is a great business model on my end that I have a low amount of money to put in, of my own money, to do this and still provide a great culinary experience and a great cocktail experience, which people could have.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Commissioner Birch?
I noticed on the, I think it's the conditions of approval, there was a note somewhere in here that you were not asking for outdoor seating. Currently, doesn't the cigar have, like, couches and things that sit out on the little patio?
Yes, they do.
So do you want to say you don't want outdoor seating, or would that...
Well, I mean, seating, there's...
20.
Well, we've talked about that. Yes, I would like outdoor seating if things change with the seating situation that's going on. But as the seating situation is going on in town right now, before it's become the law, if it becomes law, then I'm not going to ask for outdoor seating. There will be, there will be people maybe outside, but there won't be outdoor seating, you know, as far as that's concerned. But I don't know. We've talked about it.
Sure.
We've talked about it. We were kind of, because of the limited amount of seating that I have right now, because there's only 20 seats.
Yeah.
It's basically going to stay inside.
Question of staff. Mr. Paulson, Mr. Mullen, if you put more seats outside, that would affect his parking? But is that provision under review?
Currently, if they put more seats, additional seats outside, it would affect their parking. Outdoor seating is allowed by right. It would require review and approval by the town, but it's not a public hearing type of approval. The applicant could actually apply for that with his 20 seats under the current rules and then flex his seating and move some outside on a nice day or a nice evening and move those 20 seats around, but they'd have to get approval by the town for the outdoor seating. And then any service of alcoholic beverages would be, the separation required would be reviewed under the ABC policies.
But the CU, comment?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is that outdoor seating is now regulated separately from the CUP. So we won't be bringing forward outdoor seating with any CUPs. They have that allowance by right. And this is specifically on private property. So there are some nuances of how private property versus public property is treated, but it is now basically a community development director decision when it has to go through that process.
So what I'm hearing is he could keep his 20 and have some additional outside seats if you approved it.
He could, but they wouldn't be additional. It still would be under the 20 cap. However, as you mentioned, next week, the council will be, well, actually, they'll be considering for the second time. Last week, the council introduced an ordinance to decouple seats from parking. And so if that second reading goes through 30 days from next Tuesday, we will no longer have a seats-to-parking requirement, which will open up options for this instance.
Commissioner Birch, were you done?
No, I just have one more question of staff, because I know, I read that in here. Is there anything currently in his conditions of approval that limit him from being able to come back and ask for, like we said, it's a nice...
to come back and ask for, like we said, it's a nice night, move some of the seats outside?
He doesn't need to come back to the planning commission to ask that question.
So all he, there's nothing in here limiting him from going to you to get...
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami.
Decoupling the seats with the parking has to do with the fire occupancy. So what is the fire occupancy for this location? Is it 20?
It is not. We don't have that information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I wanted to thank you for all that you've done for the town. And I was going to ask if you could clone yourself so we could have more next doors. But my serious question was actually, the CUP has for a restaurant use, and, you know, as you probably know, the CUPs stay with the land.
Yes.
And I have no doubt that the Raw Bar would be really successful, but supposing something weird happened and people got against raw seafood or something, you know, some weird trend like that, what would you think about doing with that space? Would you try and come up with another concept or, you know...
I think that would be something that landlord and I would try to figure out together. I have a great relationship with her, and I think that would be something that we would try to figure out together if it didn't work out. I think the one thing that the council and the town has to understand is that Sherri Flick is very conscious of what goes on and what happens on her properties, as most of you probably know. And I don't think they picked me out of a hat when they asked me to move over there. And I think the same thing would be if, you know, God forbid, but when my time runs out, you know, as far as owning a restaurant or being a restaurateur, I have no fear or no doubt that she would pick somebody or get somebody in there not only as qualified, but maybe even more qualified than me to take over. I mean, she's that particular about that. And what she went through as far as getting that building ready for me to be in there for the next, on the 11th College Avenue, was unbelievable. And I've dealt with some landlords, and I've gone through many processes of talking to landlords about buildings and about different restaurants, and what they were willing to do and what they're willing not to do. And nobody compares to what she's willing to do for her property. And even after the fact that I've been there, and if something, you know, something breaks or something goes wrong, we have a clear communication of something that happens, and she's always, you know, there, you know, what can I do to help and what can I do to make it right? And I just, that's just, you know, that's, I don't think that's a fear for the town as far as that property is concerned, as you see Purple Onion thriving with their new owners now for almost 10 years, you know, so.
Thank you.
That answered my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to some of our speakers. When they're done, you'll have an additional five minutes to supplement your remarks.
Okay.
Mr. Pozos? Ms. Pozos? You tricked me.
I just want to, I'm Carol Pozos. I've been a resident of Los Gatos for over 20 years. I'm also a member of EMQ Auxiliary, which runs the Butter Paddle. And I just want to say, I think we all know, Nick runs a first-class operation. We're very proud of him. We've already discussed that tonight. But if there's other sides of Nick that I don't know that we've, that you've heard about, he's a very charitable individual. He hosts two events for us each year. He pays for all of the food, the expenses. One is a fundraiser for 80 people. He closes, his restaurants close, we all come in, we raise money that goes to summer programs for the children at EMQ Uplift. The second one is where he invites children and their parents in, people that normally would never come to Los Gatos for dinner or have the caliber of food that Nick provides. And he invites them in, and he serves them dinner in a very first-class way. He invites the children into the kitchen, and they sit next to him, and they put the little swizzles on the desserts. And he's just, I've had experiences where the kids come out and they say, I want to work in a restaurant when I grow up. You know, he just is a great role model, and we should all be proud of him. I wish there was more like Nick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Rod Teague.
Planning Commission staff, thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Rod Teague, Johnson Avenue. I'm just here to ask for your approval on the CPU. As we know, Nick and Sherri are definitely pillars of the community. I've been frequenting his restaurants for many years. I notice he knows most of his clientele on a first-name basis. You know, and after losing institutions like CB Hannigan's, you know, we have to expand. We've got to keep the economic vitality going. I think that this is definitely a higher and better use than what was there, because it really was kind of a bar. I'd been there, and people bring their own alcohol. A lot of the people that were frequenting the cigar shop were actually bringing in cigars and storing their cigars there as well. So from a sales tax standpoint, we probably weren't generating a whole lot of revenue out of that. You know, we know that Nick's food is amongst the best in town, if not the best, and you can't ever get enough of that. So, you know, please consider the CPU and make it a simple process and allow as much seating as possible and to stay open as late as he possibly can. That's it.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Scott Cannelli.
Thank you very much. I'm Scott Cannelli. I live 20 East Main, so directly across the street and looking down at Nick's and the cigar bar. And I would heartily agree with the last two speakers. Nick is a relationship builder, as you can all see. And one testament of that is, in the five years that I've been aware of Nick's Next Door, he has virtually the same staff. His waitstaff is the same. He invests in people, and he's all heart. In addition to that, living directly across the street, I'm very aware of the environment. And I would just say that Nick's is extremely appropriate for a downtown Los Gatos environment. I mean, we couldn't have a better tenant in the building next door than more Nick. So I strongly urge you guys to support Nick's Raw Bar. I think he's a model of what we want to do in this town, and we'd be very fortunate to have more of him. Thanks very much.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch.
So you heard, we had a little bit of dialogue about the hours and living right there, and so you do probably hear things. Do you feel any issue with pushing it to a later time, so there's some flexibility for the restaurant?
I don't at all. I think what they said in their submission was that they were asking for that so that at times they might have private events.
Correct.
And I see that as the exception. There'd be no, I mean, his other business right now is essentially closing at 11, so there'd be no reason that he'd say, let's stay open till 1. So no, I don't. And already, right now, whatever time people leave Nick's, and oftentimes, they're later at the cigar lounge. The cigar lounge is a popular place for, whenever there's a sporting event on, which, let's see, it's every Sunday, every Monday, et cetera, there's a lot of people sitting out in the patio, watching sports, cheering, you know, et cetera, and there's a lot of sound from that. And both of them are fine. I mean, we live downtown. If we wanted it absolutely quiet, then there's beautiful hills, et cetera, but the sound is perfectly appropriate for there. And actually, it's really nice, because when people are at Nick's, they're happy. And so what you hear is sounds of laughter and happy people and all that, and all I have to do is close my sliding doors, and I don't hear a thing, if I want.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannelli.
Yes?
You wrote us a letter?
I did.
In support of the application?
I did.
You're one of the few who identifies yourself as a neighbor, and that's really important to us, to get the advice from a neighbor as to how they feel about the establishment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all for the time you're spending on this.
Mr. Lowry. State your name and address for us, please.
Hi, I'm Taylor Lowry, and I actually live at 20 East Main as well. And it's kind of a tough act to follow after Scott there, because I think he said everything I was going to say. So I've lived there for about four or five years, and I'm on college as well, so I face the property. And I got to say, in the four or five years that I've been there, Nick has just been, and I should say, I don't really know Nick, other than the brief conversations I have coming in and out of his restaurant, but he's always been so attentive and sensitive to his neighbors that I genuinely, in four or five years, don't think I can think of an instance where there was any sort of egregious noise or whatever else everyone's concerned about. And of course, everyone's already spoken to his character, which I can only say, I get to see the manifestations of, and it all is kind of exciting, honestly, to have something new there that has Nick's fingerprint on it. But yeah, certainly, Nick is a great neighbor, and that's really all that I can speak to as a neighbor. Yeah.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Mr. Difoo, you have five minutes to supplement, debate, add anything you heard.
Thank you very, thank you very much for all your support and all the emails and letters that came, all the support from friends and family that supported me and sent emails to Sean. I know there's probably about 70 or 75 emails I got to Sean's desk in the last two days, and I appreciate that. But as far as, you know, submitting it up or summing it all up, is I'm going to do the best I can. And to make that spot a better location than it is, make it and have it, you know, be a part of Nick's, per se, my little stamp on that little side of town, and I'm just going to do the best I can. Will I make mistakes? Of course. But I will own up to those mistakes, and I'll do the best I can to make that the best spot in Los Gatos and keep those ratings and keep everybody from coming out, coming from San Francisco, from, you know, Hong Kong, from, you know, from Europe to come and eat at the restaurant, because that's where they're coming from, not only just Los Gatos, locals who also support me big. But it's, they are really coming out of, from everywhere. They're coming not only to the Michelin-starred restaurant that we have in this town, but they're coming to my restaurant, too. And because of what, not because we, because of what I've built. And I've built with friends and built with the people that have been with me and have supported me and my staff. It's not just about me, it's about everybody together doing, being on the same page and creating this and keeping, not having an ego, not worrying about what everybody else is doing in town as far as what the restaurants are doing. We're just concentrating on ourselves, we're concentrating on the customers. The customers have always come first in my book. And that's what will, that's why we're successful, and that's why this other place will be successful. It's because the number-one job is to take care of the people that come in through that door and making, make sure they're happy and make sure that we provide a great service and a great product. And I know I won't let you down on the product, so, you know, and the service. So I will do my best for this town, and I will do the best for everybody.
Questions. Mr. Hootis.
Thank you. There was, as you know, there were many, many letters of support. There was one from a neighbor who was concerned about noise. Without getting into the specifics, have you had any ongoing problems with noise, being cited for the noise ordinance, or not living up to the terms of the CUP in terms of hours of operation or anything of that kind?
I have not, I've complied to my CUP. And as far as the noise complaint, I know of that person, not the person herself, but I know of the complaint. It started, I kind of got looped in, I think, a little bit with the cigar situation. I kind of got mixed into that, from what I've been told. Yes, there was a traffic person coming by, checking on us, but we've always complied and tried to shut it down, or at least told our customers, hey, you know, have to be quiet. But in the five years that I've been, almost six years now that I've been there, we've had one complaint, and this person moved in in July, from what I understand. And, you know, I don't, I know all the other, you know, in the very beginning, we, you know, we got a phone call, because, you know, when we first got, and I don't think it got, you know, was told, you guys were told to the town, but we got a phone call, hey, you know what? Your hood's too loud, or something like that. It's like, okay, well, I understand, you might have been used to the other restaurant closing down a little bit earlier because they weren't as busy. We're going to be busy, but we'll do whatever we can to shut it off at a certain time and comply to that. And we have, and we haven't gotten a complaint. I don't think you guys have heard of a complaint at all. I will do whatever I can to minimize that within my business model. So, you know, if they come to me and they talk to me, I would love to talk to them about it or try to figure something out that works well for both of us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. In my count, you received, the hearing received exactly 101 letters, and one was not happy. That's the one I'm holding, that has to do with noise and late night. And 100 were in full support. Despite the percentage of support, I'm concerned about late-night noise. I'm guessing that it may be coming from the apartment building across the street, the penthouse. And I'm going to make a suggestion to the commission that we put in a condition, asking for signage that would help keep the noise down, something like, please respect our neighbors, keep noise to a minimum when leaving the premises. Would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah, we also, just so you know, we've also, you know, let our, right at Nick's, we've let our patrons know that if they're, because most of this stuff is coming outside. So when they leave the restaurant and they're talking outside on their walkway while they're waiting for their cars or while they're waiting for Ubers, we've asked Uber, and we've asked them to have the Uber cars pick them up in the parking lot, so they're not picking up on the street on College Avenue. So we've tried, we've tried to do that. I have no problem doing that at all.
So the answer to my question is yes?
Yes.
All right.
Of course.
I'm going to ask the town attorney to come in on noise considerations.
I think that'd be an excellent idea. In my five years, I'll confirm, in my five years, the first four years, I don't think we got a single complaint from either the cigar or from Nick's shop. But in the last year, we had an uptick. I would say we probably had seven to 10 complaints. Primarily, most of those were about the smoke. We actually were in code enforcement to enforce the provisions of making sure the doors were closed, that the outside patio wasn't used, and we were even in the process of maybe putting other requirements on that building. But with this issue coming up, obviously, the smoke issue is no longer a problem. And as to the noise complaints, when we do get those, we do go out. I think, as Nick mentioned, when we do go out to do a noise reading, the noise is coming from a patron that's leaving the business, and by the time they get there, there's no one there. So, and, but we are able to go, and we do noise readings, even when we, when, if it's all inside, sometimes we'll get a noise complaint at 9:00 PM, and we've gone out, and they were not violating their noise ordinance from the noise coming within.
One thing...
So I would certainly recommend that also as approval, because it might help. It might see if a patron's coming out and sees that sign, it might be one extra little bit to say, oops, let's keep it down.
Okay.
One thing, if I could mention really quick, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Is that the hotel next door to us, that's closer to us than the penthouse apartments, the, I forget the hotel's name, but the Garden Inn, I'm sorry, the Garden Inn.
Marilyn Monroe's got it.
Yes, yes, yes. For as far as I know, and they're one fence over, and their hotel is one fence over, from as far as I know, their clients have never called and complained on us. And they're, on us, so we're directly to them, and the noise coming out of there.
Thank you. And Nick's restaurant has a bar?
Yes, it does.
Will the Raw Bar have a bar?
Yes. Yes.
You'll have bar seating there?
Yes.
I didn't see that on the, well, I probably missed it, if you say.
It's on the plans.
I thought it was just 20 chairs at the tables.
No, it should be, it should be on, it should be on the plans, that there's a bar, there's a full bar there, and so there's 10 seats there, and there's 10 seats in the main area.
And you're up on the alcohol policy?
Yes.
Regarding soft drinks for the designated driver?
Yes, yes.
Hosting the phone number for the cabs, educating staff on the alcohol.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or wish to make a motion. Commissioner Badami.
I'll provide my comments, in that I would be supporting a motion to forward a... I'll provide my comments, in that I would be supporting a motion to forward a recommendation of approval, based on a number of things. You've got the close proximity of his existing restaurant, it's almost an extension of his existing restaurant, the small size of this new bar, oyster bar restaurant, of 20 seats, the reputation and character of the owner, and the long-term establishment of his existing business. You've got an elimination of cigar smoke, which seems more offensive to residents and alcohol. It's subject to the noise ordinance, and the cigar shop has a history of alcohol use anyway, so I don't see the, the use as being much different.
Commissioner Badami, why don't you make that into a motion and see what happens?
I'll make it a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval of conditional use permit application U-18-004, requesting approval for a major restaurant, Nick's Raw Bar, with alcohol sales on property zone C2 LHP. I can make the findings based on Exhibit 2, but I would add to the CUP that we add signage with requi, with regards to keeping the noise down for the neighbors.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second.
Comments? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor? Aye, passage unanimously, 6-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights for this matter?
There are not appeal rights, since this is specifically a recommendation to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
We'll now move into the public hearing portion of our agenda, and consider Item 3, which is Town Code Amendment, Application A17006 and GP 17003. Project location is town-wide, the applicant is the town of Los Gatos. Consider amendments to Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the Town Code, the general plan, and other policy documents regarding plan development ordinances, and the conditional Excuse me. Ms. Armour will present the staff report afterwards. Given that the public portion of the public hearing was closed, we should ask questions of staff, and then begin a review of the amendment application. Ms. Armour.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The item in front of you is the consideration of your, based on your discussion from February 14th, of the new plan development ordinance. It was proposed by the Plan Development Study Committee, developed over the last few years, and forwarded to you from Town Council for your recommendation. As a reminder, the recommendation from the Plan Development Study Committee is presented in three parts. A draft plan development ordinance, draft changes to the table of conditional uses, primarily addressing residential as mixed use in commercial zones, and edits to the general plan. A list of other important issues was also developed by the Plan Development Study Committee, with a recommendation that eight topics be considered. At the February 14th meeting, staff provided additional background information for each of these articulated, with one or two questions to be considered. In your staff report packet for this evening, you have additional information provided to you based on your questions. This information includes research, for examples, within the codes of Saratoga, Los Altos, Campbell, and Mountain View, Attachment 16 through 33, on six different topics. Plan development ordinances, other examples, whether there are minimum lot sizes for plan development zones, residential density limitations in commercial zones in these other cities, minimum open space in commercial zones, definition of mixed use, and definition of public benefit. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Armour? Commissioner Hudes?
So the culmination of the work of the Plan Development Study Committee resulted in some draft changes to ordinances, and tables, and things like that. Just from a process perspective, those recommendations, they went to council, and then council has then referred this to the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Correct.
Did council make any significant changes to those recommendations from the PDSC?
Council forwarded the recommendations from the study committee directly to the Planning Commission, as it had been presented to them.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Armour. I watched the tape of our last meeting, on February 14, and one of the things that, that came out of me, was Mr. Paulson's pointing out that there was no magic number for our meetings, and that a third meeting could be held if necessary. So I don't think that we should unnecessarily panic and try to push this through tonight, it's a very broad application. And given the significant scope of the application, what I'd like to do initially, is go down the row of commissioners, to get overall thoughts on the application, possibly to get a consensus, and then we can, then we can individually go to, go to specifics. So if that's okay, let's begin with Vice Chair Hudes.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll get to specific items, but I just wanted to share a few thoughts on the, the recommendations. You know, and the backdrop for this was sort of perceived and real abuses of the current plan development ordinance. And yet, at the same time, it didn't address some of the needs for flexibility, I think, that were presented by certain properties that, that came about. So, you know, remember, when this got started, we had experienced several major projects that really engaged the whole community. You know, Albright Way and some others, it engaged hundreds, if not thousands, of folks. And so I think there was a need to, to get these comments into some, some direction, and so the, the, and to tighten up the regulations at the same time as allow for flexibility. So, you know, the, the policy committee of the council kinda got the ball rolling, the Plan Development Study Committee was created, and there was a very long process of community engagement, and a real democratic process. And I want to make sure that, that we respect that, and that, that it reflects a lot of the will of the, of the community. You know, over six to eight months of work of the PDSC, 12 committee members, some of whom were opposed to some of the projects that came about. The, the committee, I believe, was chaired by Commissioner Joanne Talisfor, and Jack Van Nada, I think, was the vice chair, and they pulled together some very disparate points of view. So, you know, while I participated in that, I didn't agree with everything that was resolved along the way, but at the end of the day, I did and do support the recommendations of the PDSC, because I think it does embody a lot of the will of the community. So I, I don't see the need to reopen a lot of things that were presented or recommended by, by that group. In fact, I think that respecting the, the will of the community is, is really important. So for once, I'm gonna be kind of quiet when it comes to some of the specific suggestions, because I think that a lot of it is already reflected. Unless there is some new information, or new, you know, regulatory requirements, I, I fully support the work of the PDSC, and think we should take that as sort of the foundation.
Did the town attorney have a comment?
Just real quick, hearing you speak about the real and perceived abuses of our PD ordinance, and, and I remember that also, and the reason why, and sat in all those meetings with Joel, but what I wanted to bring up was, Monday night, I'm in Campbell, for a workshop on the housing bills that are coming forth, but at the end, it really turned into their PD ordinance, and they were complaining about the abuses, whether real or perceived, with their PD ordinances, and so they are gonna be undertaking to, to restrict further their PD ordinance in the next year. So we are ahead of the game here, and have done a lot of work already, that now that they're gonna have to do.
Commissioner Hanson, your overview?
Well, Commissioner Hudes and I both sat on the Plan Development Study Committee, and just to recap, the Plan Development Study Committee included the entire general plan committee, as well as some additional members, such as Jack Van Nada, and, and also, and that also includes a couple of council members, the general plan committee does. So as Commissioner Hudes said, the, the driver for this was, was really some of the plan developments that had not turned out the way that the town wanted. And one of the things we did in this process, I think I mentioned it in our last hearing, but I wanted to repeat it, is that one of the things we asked staff to do is, to put together a list of, of all the plan developments that had happened in the recent years, and we kinda went through each and every one of them, and said, was this one that we turned out the way we wanted, or was it not one, the one we wanted? And so it, it became really clear that, that, that there were definitely some plan developments that had been approved, that had pushed the edge of the envelope, and perceived that, that the plan development was an opportunity for relaxation of the standards, which is why I think that word came in, and it's now been changed to deviation, which is fine. But, you know, then, then there were others where we, you know, it, it turned out what just like the town wanted, and there was the particular developments that's off Regent Drive, and, and, you know, Councilmember Jensen talked about how we were able to get back open space for the town, and this was a really positive thing. So, you know, plan development can be a really positive thing for the town, if we kinda look at it like an opportunity to kind of achieve some of the town goals, while the, the developer kinda, you know, gets to meet some of their goals as well. So I, I like Commissioner Hudes to feel like this thing was pretty well-vetted, you know, we met over, you know, many, many months, and we went through all these issues, and we went through the document multiple times. And yes, there are some things that have changed, I, I know we talked at our last hearing, you know, about all the laws that are coming out in California, to push more housing, but I think, you know, when you look at kinda where we are now, and where we wanna be, the ordinance that we have now, it was not found to be something that was working for us. And so what we have now is a document that, you know, it may not be perfect, but it's much, much closer to achieving the goals that the Plan Development Study Committee thought were necessary for plan developments, and I think it will be a good tool and a useful thing to get into place, because we will be seeing, at any point in time, any, more plan developments. And so having something that had more teeth in it, that had more guidelines, that we could use to evaluate these things, and what findings we should be looking at, I think can only help the whole process. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can kinda get through some of these issues. I wanted to just comment on one more thing. I, I appreciate very, very much, I mean, I, I don't know that we had all this information when we did the, that you collected for today's staff report, when we did the, the Plan Development Study Committee, but I, it's very helpful to see what the other jurisdictions are doing and everything. But I, I did wanna caution on one point, I noticed Mountain View has, and, and we heard this in the, the desk item that came in, in February, that Mountain View and some other jurisdictions have really gone far, and, and taken this thing where you, you basically define, you know, what a public benefit is, and then exactly what kind of concessions you would give for a certain amount of public benefit. And while I think that, that process is really useful, I was wanting to say that I wouldn't want to tie that to this particular document, because I think that needs some baking, and it needs to happen, but I wouldn't want that to delay this document, because we would have so much more of a tool with what is in front of us now, and then hopefully, in the, you know, the coming months, especially with the general plan update, and I know that the Town Council's looking at objective standards, you know, maybe, you know, that kinda stuff can get addressed, but I didn't want it to stand in the way of getting this approved.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm glad I'm third, because I happen to agree with the prior two speakers, and that's all I wanted to say.
Commissioner, I was gonna do it anyway. Commissioner Birch?
So, I agree, and I'm not gonna repeat everything that was said, but I do have a question about, in the, in the last meeting, there was a list of items of us to consider, and we asked you guys to go back and do work, and you did a lot, this is really helpful. As far as our feedback tonight, now that we have all this, are you looking from us to say, on these topics that had specific questions, minimum size, public benefit, are you looking for a recommendation from us on those items of how we feel like, no, we shouldn't define public benefit, it should be on a case-by-case basis? Or are you wanting us to address each of those, so that, and the recommendation that goes on, or as we pass this to council, they understand what we feel about each of these items? I wanna be really clear, I address this properly, and don't go too-
Right.
-in the weeds, if you don't need me to.
So those, the questions, there were nine questions, that were developed by staff, in the previous staff report, and those were based on the other important items that were developed by the study committee. So the study committee had this recommendation for the plan development ordinance, but there were other items that came up as part of their discussion, and so they did include those in their kind of recommendations to Town Council and to you. And so if any of these items are of importance in, in your consideration, to be part of this as it moves forward, then staff would ask for a specific recommendation. If you feel that they are not important to be considered at this time, then that's fine as well.
And I think, as you mentioned as well, it'd be beneficial, as the council, when the council, when they get to the council, they have the benefit of your, you know, deliberations on some of these questions, because they're gonna be answering the same questions as they go through that exercise.
So then, may I go on? So that, good, because that's how I approached studying this, because this can be a lot of information to digest, and there were a few things then that I felt were kind of important. One item was talking about the inconsistencies with the zoning and the general plan. And in our last meeting, we highlighted a few things, I don't know, it's highlighted in this pile of paper somewhere, and I just wanted to, I think we all felt the same, that we really felt like the zoning ordinance and the general plan needed to be aligned. I know that that came up in our last, we talked about a few things, but it was one of the items that I flagged as important. I also looked at the defining public benefit, and I felt like keeping that broad, and on a case-by-case basis, was very important, because depending on where the property is located within the town, the benefits could differ. And I did see that other cities linked those, oh, thank you, linked those to things, and while I could see a benefit if, if we didn't have so many variations of neighborhoods and everything, I, I think leaving it relatively open to determination by the deciding body is important. I did want, I was hoping maybe there would be a little bit of feedback within the conversation that we have tonight. There was a lot of differentials in the paperwork on the other cities on the minimum size, and the density, I'm sorry, I can't see that that well. I need, no, it's, no, it's me, I, I need new glasses.
We can enlarge that, it was just, it's just currently at this size-
No.
...so that you can see all of the questions, but it's very easy to enlarge.
It's just my age. Um, so-
You can't see a 20?
She's got 20. That, that was, that was really good.
I'm seeking overview.
So, I was kinda hoping that maybe I could get a little bit of dialogue, I definitely hear you guys say that you, you feel like it's a good document and everything, but these were the questions that came up, and I want this not to stall, I, I would like to see us go through these points, make our recommendations, and then see it move forward. So if that, you know, takes a little bit of extra time, I think it's worth it, I think this is important, and, and like our attorney said, we are getting in front of other jurisdictions with this, and I can just tell you, from my personal career experience, it's becoming an issue, and I would like to see us have something move forward sooner than later, so.
As I mentioned earlier, if we need it, we can schedule another meeting, just, we need to get it right. Commissioner Badami, overview?
This was vetted over a long period of time, with several meetings, and with some very brilliant minds. So for me, we can either take action, move forward, or just keep stalling and talking. With due respect to what Commissioner Birch said, she did bring up some excellent points. However, I don't see members of the community flooding the chambers right now in opposition or providing further input, so I'd, I'd be more inclined to move this forward.
Thank you. I agree with everything that was said, I'd like to move on to specifics. Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to say that, in spite of my comments, I, I didn't mean to imply that we shouldn't discuss the issues that were flagged, because there were those open items when we finished the Plan Development Study Committee discussions, and, and we knew that those were open items, so I, I have no problem with having that discussion, as long as, you know, it doesn't drag the thing out for many more meetings. But I, I think it would be useful for the Town Council to hear our input on those issues as well, as they deliberate on this.
Commissioner Hudes? Commissioner Hudes.
No, I agree completely. And my remarks were to support the work that had been done, but also to acknowledge that there were these open items. So, I'd actually like to start with a question of staff on number one, and to maybe summarize the percentage of open space for commercial zones, and were there some options that were put on the table by this pretty comprehensive review that you did of other municipalities?
So, if you do take a look in your staff report, for the question of open space requirements in commercial zones, there was one of the cities, I believe it was Los Altos, that did have some requirement, but it was actually for residential in commercial zones. And I believe this question was intended to focus on requirements for commercial in commercial zones, or in general.
Vice Chair Hudes, did the PDAC address this one?
Well, I think this was one where there was not a lot of consensus, if I remember. And so, it was one that, and some of these, there was discussion and maybe not quite consensus, but some direction, where this particular one, I think we were not able to make a recommendation. And I don't believe there was a strong debate about different options for this particular one.
Mr. Paulson.
Thank you. So, I think this really came up as a result of the specific plan for the North Forty, and the comment that maybe there wasn't enough open space in that development, and the fact that that's the only development in town that requires open space for a commercial property. So, I think that's what started that conversation, and as Commissioner Hudes, Vice Chair Hudes mentioned, we never kind of closed that item. So, I think we have a local example, which is our current specific plan, which requires 30% open space. 20% of that has to be green, and then the rest can be some form of hardscape. There were also discussions about definitions of green open space versus other open space, and so some of those things can be captured. The other jurisdictions that we have, as Ms. Armour mentioned, they don't really have an open space requirement for commercial. It just, it's not typical, but that doesn't stop the planning commission from making a recommendation if they think that that is appropriate.
I read that one of the towns had 50% open space. Was that, did I miss it? Was that residential?
Most of those are generally coverage.
I thought it was an office building. Okay.
Yeah, so coverage is...
Just to clarify, the numbers that you cited, that's for the North Forty specific plan only, correct?
That is correct.
And so, we have virtually none or no other properties that are going to be of that scale that would just naturally apply those numbers to, correct?
That's a fair statement, I would say.
Commissioner Hanson.
So, I thought about this, and I read all the, and had the experience of the Plan Development Study Committee. And my general thinking on this is, even though, you know, that was a really controversial topic within North Forty, I agree with Mr. Paulson that that was really the main issue, and that's fairly well resolved at this point. I wouldn't want to put, you know, the stick on this thing. I think that it would be much better to not have a minimum open space requirement for, as an automatic thing for plan developments, but rather make it a carrot, and that, you know, if it is a public benefit, then that there might be some development concessions that could be made, because they would give open space, you know, in the commercial zones. Because coming up with the right number is an issue, and then wouldn't we be uncompetitive, potentially, and to other towns, is, was my concern as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Birch.
So, I agree. I don't, I don't think we should put a number. I think, again, I think there's so many unique properties in this town, it should be on a case-by-case basis, but I do think it should be noted that it is the desire of the town that there be open space. And I don't know exactly how to word this, that's your expertise, but I don't want that to all be hardscape. A lot of times, people take open space, and they utilize their numbers for sidewalks, you know, I'm sorry, hardscape, patios and things. I'm taking that a step further and say, there should be some softscape or permeable surfaces, not just hardscape. Green was, well, yeah. I mean, every town and city seems to define that differently, so I'm trying to be really specific. I don't want the sidewalks to be the open space. So, does that make sense, Ms. Armour?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes.
I think there was also testimony a number of times on the North Forty, but also, I believe in this committee, on other definitions of open space, and potentially adopting a definition from the federal government that talks about public access to open space. And so, I would suggest that that, you know, be considered as well if we go further into defining open space. But I don't see the need to come up with a number on a townwide basis.
Commissioner Hanson.
I would just point out one more thing for Commissioner Birch. I mean, we spent a long time on the purpose of and intent, and if you look at the four items that are in the proposed ordinance, the purpose and intent, number three is the maximization of open space. So, it's just a question, but I don't, I'm not in disagreement that we shouldn't be more specific about what open space means. That could be added, I think, to, you know, green open space, or, you know, whatever the case may be, and I think that would be great.
Other comments? I have a couple. I watched the tape of the last meeting, as I said, and Commissioner Hanson gave a persuasive speech about the PDAC, is that right? PDSC, and the work that they had done, and that the documents before us are superior to what we have. That's the message I'd like to leave with council. But two other considerations. Public benefit has been a moving target. Some allegations of abuse and twisting the words. I'm not going to read this letter, but I want to put it into the record. It's dated January 14th, 2016. Concerns about the definition of a public benefit, and it's written by Mr. Jack Van Ada, and it is marvelous. I think it nails it. To prevent, to prevent it being taken advantage of, I want to put this in the record and make sure that council gives it a special note. And also, a consideration from Ms. Quintana. We regrettably did not get her bullets. I was looking forward to them. Commissioner Hanson did the best to get her to promise, and she didn't. She said she would try. But if those bullets are available, I'm sure council could profit from them, if you want to recontinue your appeal. One thing she said was consideration that in a project, or an application, that consideration be given to the A and S, taking place at the same time that the PD is being evaluated. I think there's some merit to that. I'll offer that Commissioner Hudes doesn't agree, but I've seen a couple come through us where I wish I had the A and S at the same time as the PD. Other comments? Commissioner Hudes.
So, maybe I'll take them one at a time. So, on that last point, on the simultaneous A and S application, does staff have a perspective on that? Because I think this was a debate, if I remember, it was one of the issues that was put before us that I don't think we resolved. And really, to me, this is a process question that calls in, you know, efficiency and use of town resources. And so, I wonder if staff has a perspective on whether they should be simultaneous or sequential?
So, in the original staff report, staff did talk a little bit about this issue, but primarily, our recommended consideration is the question that is listed as question number five, which is, should architecture and site and plan development applications be allowed to be processed at the same time? Because we definitely have seen proposals where the applicants are not ready to get into the fine detail of what the buildings would look like. There are others where they do come forward with that level of detail, and therefore, having the architecture and site application as a part of that package would help expedite the process.
Commissioner Birch.
However, couldn't we look at that from the flip side? Let's say I was looking at a property, I wanted to do this, but financially, I'm not going to invest on a full design until I know if I could, if I could get the PD. You know, it could, yeah. The town attorney has a comment back to me.
I'll give you one more anecdotal information, is that if the project comes in, it's just as a PD in a subdivision, it's a legislative action, so it's not subject to the Housing Accountability Act. If they come in with the subdivision and the PD with the architectural in sight, then it could very well be under the Housing Accountability Act, and you only have to apply your objective standards.
Right.
So, there is a reasoning why it benefits the town, because then usually they come in one at a time, and you would have that subjective criteria. We definitely are going to be improving our objective standards, but it's always good to have the ones that we have about character of the neighborhood.
Can I, wait, can I finish?
Yes, continue.
So, I would just like to know, from then staff's point of view, to me, it doesn't make sense to make that be something we would ask people to do. Obviously, they could do it if they want to, if they feel extremely confident, and they want to put that kind of money and resources, and be subject to further, have us be subject to further rules, but what's your opinion?
Well, the current process, as you've seen with, for instance, 105 Newell, the PD at that site, was for them to come forward with the plan development ordinance, which was then followed by subsequent applications for the subdivision and the four proposed houses. If you were to allow it to be, to go through in parallel, then that is one example where those applications might have come in at the same time, rather than having to go through further process at this point.
And I think it's really just a question of, currently, we don't really allow folks to do that. The code isn't really clear. Now, we've done one, but it was a very specific circumstance, where it came through at the same time. I don't think we should force it, but I think allowing the option is reasonable from staff's perspective, and then they can choose whether or not they want to take that additional risk that's involved.
Okay. I agree. That is how I would approach it.
Commissioner Hudes.
So, just to get back to Mr. Schulz's discussion, it sounds like if we made it optional and did allow it, it could very well put the town in the position of having to, to take that development on a by-right basis. Is that correct? So, it seems as though there are three options here with regard to this question. The first option would be to require that A and S and PD be coupled. The second would be to allow it to be coupled optionally, and the third would not to be allowed, not to allow it. And for the reasons that Mr. Schulz suggested, I would prefer that last option of not, not leaving that as an option, because I think the town could very well be put in the position of having to take a by-right development that isn't in the best interest of the town.
May I have a follow-up?
Commissioner Birch.
Yeah, it's just a follow-up to that, then, back to the attorney. Is there anything, then, that you could see, knowing some of the laws that are going to change, that if we said you cannot do those, you don't have the option, that we would have any, anyone had any legal stance against us, because it does eliminate the ability to do the by-right?
It's certainly possible, because the bills are changing constantly, so there may be certain bills that don't allow that type. But there's nothing, if we put it in our ordinance, and it turns out that it violates state law, we'd have to just come back with a quick amendment and take it out, or not enforce that until. That certainly is an option to forward on to council, and then I can look at it more. At this point in time, we are looking at just the opposite of that, was to make it happen, as opposed to not allow it. And as Joel says, that's really what we tell applicants, that they shouldn't, they should first get their PD or their subdivision, and then come back for their A and S. But if it's a recommendation that you think council should really look at, so that we're able to continue with subjective findings in our A and S's, for single-family homes, that is, there's nothing that would prevent this being a PD and a subdivision of 20 homes, and then three or four coming in at a time to get around the ability that we'd only be able to use objective standards.
And I would also just offer, you know, along this discussion, it has a lot of different options. I think the other reality is, the town in general has a nearly unquestionable, unquenchable thirst for information. So, you end up in a situation where you may end up with a applicant that just says, I want to change it from this zone to this zone PD, and I'm going to ask for these exceptions, and I'm not going to show you which ones I'm going to put them on, and then I'm going to draw some lines on a piece of paper, and then you're going to make that decision. So, you know, we've seen one of those recently, which actually wasn't asking for those exceptions, but again, it's just lines on a paper and a zone change. So, that's the one kind of challenge that we could run into, absent the fact that, you know, the reality is that, you know, the next bill may say, if you're doing a subdivision or, you know, a plan development, then this applies as well, which is kind of out of our hands.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, so, I was going to say, I'm pretty clear that, what I remember when we discussed this in the Plan Development Study Committee, is that, because we had several planning commissioners and town council members on the committee, is that what has, had happened with some of the plan developments is, what Mr. Paulson described, is that you get all these terms and conditions resolved in the PD, in the plan development ordinance, and then they come back for the A and S. And we actually have seen these, a couple of these at our planning commission meetings, where there's, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction to make changes, because everything's, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed in the PD, and then what is the point of even reviewing the A and S? But this whole housing accountability thing wasn't nearly as hot as it is right now. So, I'm kind of with Commissioner Hudes on this thing. I'm like, you know, we might have to change it, but anything we can do to, to not obligate the town to have to make decisions that we might not be ready to make, I would think that we shouldn't do that right now, so.
Commissioner Badami, had your hand up?
I did. I don't want staff to do more work than we already asked them, because we had to fetch all this information from all these other jurisdictions. But to your knowledge, do you know of any other jurisdictions that make that requirement, that the A and S be coupled with the PD application?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not aware of any.
All right. Well, that being said...
Town attorney has a comment.
Oh, sorry.
You know, I've certainly worked in a lot more jurisdictions probably than my colleagues, but I can't remember ever seeing a PD where it coupled those two together.
A and S?
Yeah, with an A and S.
Okay. Well, that being said, I'm kind of along the camp with Commissioner Hanson and Vice Chair Hudes with no, I've got that concern with the by-right development.
Other comments? Are we at the point of making a motion with considerations, or do you want to continue this? Give me, give me an answer to those two questions. Commissioner Hudes.
I don't know that all the questions are equally important, but I do think the discussion about public benefit maybe warrants a little bit more conversation, if people would take the time on that. And I know Commissioner Hanson had some initial comments on that. I don't know, I don't know if she'd like to expand on it, but I have some other comments on that topic.
On public benefit, I've submitted Jack Van Ada's letter.
Right, I wanted to come back to that point.
Which starts to address those points. Commissioner Hanson.
So, we saw Jack Van Ada's public benefit, and I actually think that that definition is fine, and I don't honestly recall why we didn't end up doing it. But as I was reading through all the other jurisdictions that we had, pretty much all of them had examples of public benefits, and it dawned on me, and I read, reread the draft ordinance, it is really wide open, and there's nothing, no meat whatsoever to public benefit. So, I, my personal recommendation would be, rather than define public benefit, unless it's really general, like Jack Van Ada had it, that we should just give some examples of what, what we consider a public benefit. It's not that it, that that's going to apply in every situation, but it would be examples of things that we know, for example, the town wants to have hotels, and I saw that in one of the examples, you know, and we want to have more open space, we want to have more affordable housing over and above what we're required to do by law, you know, if possible, because we're always looking to meet Rena and stuff. So, I actually kind of made a list of the stuff that, that made sense to me, and we could give examples of things that would be, I know Commissioner, Vice Chair Hudes had mentioned in many, many meetings, and still does, about a startup incubator. And these are just examples, they're not definitions of public benefit, but it would at least give people that are considering doing a PD, some, something to chew on, to think about before they put their application in, so that we're not sitting here going, really, that's not, you know, a public benefit. I mean, so, they would have some examples.
Well, then, I'll read into the record Jack's definition. A public benefit would be to... "A public benefit will be defined as a project that makes a substantial contribution to the public infrastructure that is consistent with the vision and objectives of the general plan. Mea compliance with the existing zoning shall not be considered a substantial community benefit. Substantial benefit must be actions that are substantively above and beyond what an applicant would be required to make in order to comply with the underlying zoning." So that's my thought and definition on public benefit. Commissioner Hootis?
I would agree with that, and would suggest that we include that for consideration by the council, but I would also agree that, with Commissioner Hanson, that I think examples are helpful. It seems that from the staff's table, most of the jurisdictions did list examples, and I found in particular, the one from Tampa, Florida, on page 15 of 15, another good list. And I think that, I think it's helpful, because I think you can look someone in the eye and say, you know, how is what you're proposing in any way like these examples? And at least have a starting of a discussion on that topic.
Excellent. Do you want to read them?
I don't think I need to. It's in page 15 of 15.
All right. Other comments? Commissioner Birch?
Well, this isn't about public benefit, so, are we?
Fine.
Okay. So I just want to look at some of these. For example, item number three, yes, I, I mean, we talk a lot about our hillsides, and I don't, sure. "Should P D applications be required for subdivisions of five or more lots in the hillside residential zone?"
Thank you.
And my feeling is, yes. On number four, should there be a minimum lot size? You know, the examples we got were all over the place. I'm going to go with the recommendation. We already talked about five, and then we've just talked about six. So I just wanted to make sure that we looked at each one of those, they were identified as important.
What was the recommendation on four?
Wasn't it, I went, I found this...
Forty?
There's no minimum lot size, is the recommendation.
Yeah.
That's what you want?
Yeah. Because again, we're looking at a town with a lot of variations, and I think when we start putting arms around those and saying it has to be this minimum, we could potentially lose an opportunity.
Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, this is one where I supported the final report that said no minimum lot size. I did have an argument on the other side of it, but I really wanted to ask staff's opinion on this one again, because I think the reason for having a minimum lot size is to improve administrative efficiency, so that we're not considering P Ds for tiny projects, and also not proliferating requests for P Ds, which may have led to some abuses. So I'd be interested to hear staff's opinion on the minimum lot size one as well.
Because I don't know if Ms. Armour has anything additional, but if she does, I think, given the requirements and findings in the recommended P D ordinance, I don't see that being a large issue. I think, I can't remember if I said this out loud in the P D S C, or I just think I did, but the example is, you have a smaller, maybe 10,000 square foot lot, that someone wants to come in and put affordable housing on, but they need to go 31 feet instead of 30. And so, you know, variance is one option, but the other is, let's go through a P D, they, you know, have this great site plan and design, and the town's really interested in having that project, but we've kind of shot ourselves in the foot, and we have this, basically, virtually an acre minimum lot size. I think if we found that people started coming in, you know, at a rapid clip for that type of projects, then we might reevaluate that. But ultimately, it's providing flexibility, so in case that type of project comes in, we have that opportunity.
Thank you. Now I remember why I supported the recommendation.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a question on that. I mean, I realize that the P D could create its own standards, but I mean, there's a lot of cross-language between our zoning code, so I mean, wouldn't they, I mean, unless it was explicitly said in the P D ordinance, wouldn't they still have to, as a starting point, to have, say, like, the hillside's a minimum one acre lot, and, you know, and I think it was an 8,000 in downtown, and, I mean, wouldn't they still have to use that as a starting point before the P D ordinance was crafted?
So, anything that is an exception from the underlying zone, because the underlying zone is retained, this is an overlay, would be considered among the list of exceptions? But that is the purpose of the P D zone, to allow those exceptions.
But, so, when it would come to us and our town council, that would be flagged as an exception from the zoning code, and we're supposed to try and, you know, not allow those deviations, unless the town's getting something for it, is kind of the spirit of this thing. So I feel like we're, I guess, hearing that, that we're covered, because it's going to come up, be flagged as a discussion item when the P D ordinance is crafted. And so, you know, you could look at it holistically, with whatever benefits the town's going to get from it, and what goals it accomplishes relative to the P D. So I wouldn't be that worried about it. But, and as Mr. Paulson said, I mean, if, for some reason, we've got a huge rush of people trying to build, you know, 35-foot buildings on 5,000 square foot lots, with, you know, 80 units, not that it could happen, but if it's, if that did happen, we could certainly reevaluate it.
Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, and I just wanted to emphasize, I think that's one of the important recommendations in the new ordinance, that the P D overlay is not intended for a deviation of standards applicable to similar types of development. So in other words, it's not a way to get around zoning or direction that's otherwise called for in the zoning or in the general plan.
Other comments? I'm going to try something. I'm going to make a motion that we forward the draft P D ordinance, modifications to the conditional use table, and general plan amendments to the town council, with recommendation for adoption. I'm including comments made, or that may be offered right now, but that have been made on the transcripts of the February 14 meeting and March 28 meeting tonight. I make the finding that there's no possibility that this project will have significant impact on the environment, therefore, the project not subject to CEQA. I make the required finding that the proposed amendments to the town code zoning regulations regarding plan development overlay zones and residential uses in non-residential zones are and must be consistent with the general plan. I make the finding that the proposed general plan amendments are internally consistent with the general plan, and that we indeed forward a recommendation to the town council for approval of the proposed amendments to the town code and general plan, giving consideration to the comments we've made in our meetings, and comments that may be now added to this motion. Can I get a second? Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye? Aye, passes unanimously, six zero. Mr. Paulson, a matter like this, there are no appeal rights, is that correct?
That's correct. This matter will be forwarded to the council, where they will begin their deliberations.
So then, we turn to commission matters, and I have one. At the last CDAC meeting, Conceptual Advisory Design Committee, is that CDAC? We were looking at a potential project from a potential applicant, and reference was made to perhaps this project could be streamlined. And I didn't know what that meant. I'd heard the term, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a professional town person, but I heard the term, and I paid attention to today's mercury. And the streamlining thing seems to be SB 35, which is not a pending bill, I understand it's in law. And what the mercury was saying is that the Valco project in Cupertino, or sunny Cupertino, which has been going on for 150 years, is now going to be considered possibly under SB 35 streamlining, meaning some folks may get to do what they want, contrary to guidance from the respective town. And I thought, I would ask, I know you guys are working on an orientation for all of the bills, this one seems to be really important, and before somebody throws it at me, I'd like a layman's understanding of what it is, if we could arrange that in the future.
Well, I'll take a little stab at it, and Mr. Schultz can wrap it up, but, yeah, that project has a long history. They have submitted it specifically as an SB 35 project. The two biggest hurdles that we see for projects in the town are that it has to be a minimum of 50% affordable, and then you have to use prevailing wage labor. So those two triggers and the size of our projects don't generally align.
Are you saying that for this streamlining to take effect, that it's 50% BMP?
Correct.
And 100% union labor?
Correct.
So that might work on big projects, but not necessarily on things we have here?
Not necessarily.
All right. Well, this was alarming, so thank you very much.
It is alarming, and it's what we've been spending quite a bit of time on. As I think you know, I sit on the California League of Cities Housing Economic Development Committee. We met in January, we're meeting again in the beginning of April to go over the new bills. There's even more, the Weiner bill, the 827 bill is also somewhat alarming and taking away more local control, and that's what the league's biggest mission is, is to protect local control. So I have been working on it. We're real close to selecting who we want to come to town and do a workshop. It'll probably be, I'd kind of like it to be after that April meeting, but we might even do it before then, to bring all those bills. I went to the one on, as I mentioned, Monday in City of Campbell, I felt that was at that high level, 30,000 feet level, and we will really be drilling down. It's not just to present you what these bills mean, but to me, it's more, if these projects are going to be based on just objective standards, what can we do to solidify what our objective standards are that can help us through the projects that do qualify for either SB 35 or for any other, the Housing Accountability Act? So that's where we're going to be heading, and you should be getting in the next week or so, dates that maybe are available in either late March or April timeframe.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I think the town attorney also mentioned, you know, although we may not have a lot of projects that are going to take the SB 35 path, the Housing Accountability Act path provides a lot of options in and of itself, and it doesn't have the same triggers. You know, the other big part of SB 35 is, you know, that project in particular, which I think is now 2,402 residential units, 1.8 million square feet of office, 400,000 square feet of retail, and it has to be completed and approved in six months, and you cannot do a full environmental review on it.
Thank you.
So those are the things that'll be important.
Thank you very much. Are there other commission matters? Commissioner Hootis? I've been calling you Commissioner Hootis all night. Vice Chair Hootis?
Taking anything. I just wanted to thank staff for the excellent work on the plan development and conditional use permit. We asked a lot of questions, you did a lot of homework, we asked more questions, you did more homework, and in the end, it's been very helpful to be able to get through this rapidly, so that we can understand the areas where we did need to probe, and the areas that work has been done, and I just wanted to say thank you for that work.
One other commission matter, for the benefit of the commission, I have a stack about YoThick concerning 248 Jared Lane. Is that coming up? Is there something I'm supposed to do with that?
Yeah, that will be coming up. I'm assuming that's an environmental document by the size of your thickness that you're holding up. And so that will be coming back through. It was a project that was approved a few years ago, they never built it, and so now they're having to come back through the process, and I think it's a new owner as well.
And that's in the near future?
Yes, it will be coming to the planning commission.
All right. Do we have a report from the director of community development?
We talked about some of it, but last week, council met, where they took public testimony, discussed Alberta Way with the applicant, and continued it to the meeting next Tuesday. And so there, they'll continue their deliberation and either render an action, well, they'll render an action for sure, they'll either approve, grant the appeal, deny the appeal, or they may continue it with request for additional information.
Any chance it comes back to us?
There's always a chance. Yes, that's always, that's always an opportunity, something to look forward to. And so, the other thing that I mentioned earlier is, they did the decoupling of seats and parking, and again, that will be going to a second reading next week. The other thing they will be considering next week, and Ms. Ren's no longer here, but the policy committee has recommended that the alcohol beverage policy be rescinded, so they will be considering that as well next week.
For those commissioners that were not at the hearing, Commissioner Hootis and I were there, this is Alberta Way. You'll be happy to know that there were 40,000 to 55,000 red shirts from the concerned citizens, and most of them said, planning commission rocks. Commissioner Birch, you have a comment?
So, on that, I had a question about that. It's my understanding that the applicant reduced the square footage in their application to council, is that true? Or he came in and said that he could? I haven't watched it yet, so.
So, the information that was provided by the applicant to the hearing last week was the same plan as what had come to you. However, there is a letter that was received last week, that is going to be part of the packet that's published tomorrow, to go to town council for next week's meeting, where they talked about being, accepting of a condition that would further reduce the size to 70,000 square feet.
So, would that be considered new information, and then turn it back to us? Or is that going to stay at council level?
So ultimately, the council has the option, even though the policy suggests that it has to come, that it should come back to the planning commission, they don't have to take that action. They may choose to, and that's why I said it always, the potential's always there, but they could simply say that's not material from what the planning commission saw, and take an action themselves.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the great reports, as Vice Chair Hootis pointed out, and thank all of you for your hard work and your perseverance. This meeting is adjourned.